Good morning. We're gonna, we're gonna get started here this morning. Thank you for joining us for the Kent County Board of Commissioners Finance Committee. We're going to get started this morning with public comment. I'm told we have a few members who've already put their names in, so we will get started with public comment.
First up is Brian Walters.
Good morning. You have three minutes. Please start with your name and address.
Good morning. Brian Walters, thirty-eight-ten Holtman Court Northeast. I'm also speaking as the president of the Dean Lake Association, which is a voluntary homeowners association, speaking on Agenda Item 4D. I'm here for one reason and one reason only. As you've seen in the agenda packet, the projected costs for this project have skyrocketed from what was previously estimated. At the time that this was first considered by the county in its resolution to approve the project going forward and to the Circuit Court process and the like, we're looking at a million to a million-one project, about an eight to nine thousand dollar per household assessment. Where now, the costs of this project have roughly tripled to almost three million dollars, two-point-nine million, almost a twenty-four thousand dollar per household assessment. And what we're asking the county, this committee and ultimately the county as a whole to do, is just what any private owner would do on a project with these massively escalating costs, is to, to, to ask for more detail and more analysis and more consideration of how did we get to, from one-point-one to two-point-nine million dollars on this project? Are there any alternatives available to manage the cost of this? And to make that information available for consideration by not only the entire commission, but by the residents who are ultimately going to be paying for this project if it goes forward through the assessments. And so, I want to say our, we have received some information from the Drain Commission for sure. I'm not trying to, to, to speak negatively of Mr. Yonker or his staff. We have, we did have a public hearing in front of the Drain Commission. We did receive, we have received some information. Most of it has been at a pretty high level, though. And most of that information has suggested that there are, there are two kind of sources of the cost increase. Inflation and some project scope changes requiring some streets to be cut open to put in the drain pipe where originally they were going to be able to bore through without destroying the streets. But the math isn't mathing, if, to, to kind of be blunt about it. You don't go from a million-one to two-nine for those issues. You know, if it was from a million-one to a million-five, okay, inflation over the last three years, I get it. Okay, you know, there'd be increased costs. The cost of repairing, of excavating and repairing those streets is about another four-hundred thousand. That might get it to a million-nine. There's still an extra million dollars of costs here in this project that we really don't understand. And we're just, we're asking you, we're really relying on you to, because you're, you're kind of standing in our shoes essentially. It's a private project that's still being kind of handled by the county, but being paid for by us to say, let's do a deeper dive into this. Let's come back in two weeks. We're not talking months or years of this. Come back in two weeks with a deeper analysis for consideration by the Finance Committee. It could still be decided by the end of the month by the, by the entire county. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Michael Present.
Good morning. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to, to speak. I'm also speaking about the Dean Lake Special Assessment and the bond consideration on your agenda. I don't want to waste your time. Mr. Walters covered, I think, everything very well and in, I think he's very clear about the concerns that we have, that a hundred percent of the cost increase from one-point-one million to two-point-nine million is being passed on to the residents. Yet, there were three decisions, just sticking with one engineering firm's opinion about why that needed to go, the project scope needed to change, the delay in time, the inflation that Mr. Walters mentioned. And then also, at one-point-one million, there was no consideration of a bond being necessary. And now, at two-point-nine million, there is a bond under consideration. And that in turn would cause the cost to be passed, the cost of the bond would in turn be passed on to the, the residents. So, a hundred percent being passed on based on three decisions: time, the project scope, and the financing. That was not part of the residents who are being asked to make that cost. Setting aside what's legally appropriate, I just wondered if this was any of you individually that had someone come up to you, as one of my neighbors said at the Drain Commission meeting, wouldn't you in fact want a second opinion before moving forward? So, just respectfully ask you to consider that. I think also, I probably forgot at the beginning, I'm supposed to give you my name and address. It's on the card, but I'm happy to say it out loud if you'd like. It's, are we, are we good? Okay. Thank you again for your, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next is Dean Dodgson.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning. I've been a resident on Dean Lake for sixty-three years. I have a structure that's at the lowest point, so it flooded in twenty-twenty when the water got so high. When that was flooded, it was only a foot below Dean Lake Road, coming up in the road. And at some point, it could flood that road. So, it might be on their benefit to do something for the county too, so we never have a flood in Dean Lake Road. So, I suggest that we maybe pitch in or something to help pay for it. But I definitely think we need it, because I had that much damage to my yard already from this flood, so I really don't want to have to go through that again. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Nyleen and Doug Keel.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning. Nyleen Keel, twenty-two eighty-four Breezy Point Drive. And just want you to know that as a resident of pretty much all my life, our, we have family property and our parents had bought that many, many years ago in the fifties. And the flooding of the lake has given us the, probably the most devastation, because we have to, we have a causeway that we drive across to get to our house. So, I am very much in support of the project and, but also have concerns about the cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Cindy Bright.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning. Cindy Bright, thirty-five sixty-two Manderly. I sort of did a point. We, I wanted to reinforce Brian's comments. The cost is incredible, incredible, from what we initially voted on. So, and then I understood it was passed by resolution, really instead of the two-thirds vote. There were fifty-five objection letters. The other thing that's, there's no cost cap or ceiling. The Special Assessment District, we feel, should really be expanded. And further cost analysis, I, we, we really feel is necessary. To us, the benefit outweighs the cost. Or the cost outweighs the benefit, unlike what we originally thought when we initially voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jerry Hunefield.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning. Jerry Hunefield, thirty-seven hundred Wild Rose. I've suffered extensive damage on my property over the years for lack of the drain in this lake, and I really want to support the drain, but I am too concerned about these costs, as what Brian said and Mike said. The cost just really expanded, and I think it could be done so much better, looking at it again economically on a, on a way to reduce the cost of this. We don't need that, all the over-engineering, but we do need the drain. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Dee Jones.
Good morning. Thanks for joining us.
It's good, though. I'm Dee Jones. Uh, how y'all doing? First off, I want to speak about some cool stuff. So, I developed the esports league with you guys, the Youth Justice Influenced Esports League. I've been able to bring kids to the GR Gold Games to get on the court. I've been able to bring kids to the Detroit Lions facility two times. We're actually going to be starting up next Tuesday again. I'm excited to start up the league, because it's been getting hotter and hotter, and we've been having community divides. But need to still take action and be able to keep the youth off the streets, because the youth is the future. We need to invest into the youth. One thing I can say about Kent County, I was angry a little bit, because I wanted you guys to fix up the basement in the Juvenile Service Center, and now the basement is about to get fixed. I don't know who was the person who pushed that through, whether it's the Dems or the Republicans. Thank you, because that needed to be changed, so we could build that esports lab. And the cool thing about it is me developing this league a year ago, or a year and a half ago. It's been a little long time. But now I found out that somebody was trying to give some funding to Kent County, ten thousand, and they're actually going to use three thousand of that to buy TVs and PS5. So, I want to thank everybody on the county, the county board, for actually supporting that, because now it started from we buying Xboxes to just give access to our students, the best access to the newest game systems and the best video games. And then you guys bought the video games the last season. The county actually bought the games that the kids played, and now you guys are buying systems and TVs, so the program continues without me. So, the longevity is there, and I think, I like the love and thank county and give you guys all of the love, because positive love and energy is definitely needed, especially with the unjustice killings and things like that, with the injustices with our citizens. And I feel like the police is wrong, and you guys have these financial resources, and I believe that we need to start investing in the community. To get to the core root of these problems, the things that the Devosas and Van Andos and the Sekias, or these billionaires, these local billionaires, they need to be held accountable, because they are the plague and some of the core, cause the core root issues with their policies. And these new political funds and organizations that they're starting up to try to keep Dems off the ballot and not into the seats. But I just want people, regardless of the party that you guys choose, to acknowledge that you guys run on, because of this two-party system with our US government, our federal government. I just want politicians that care about the community that's going to push the needle and not be silent. Also, I have the Summer Initiative, thirty-two billion dollar company, Epic Games, Ohio State University, Michigan State University. We'll be educating kids, showing them how to stream on a streaming app. I spoke to the COO, who actually handled a trillion-dollar portfolio. I'll be speaking to him again on Friday. Then I'll be on the news, speaking about that trillion-dollar portfolio and the organization app that we'll be using. And then my good friend, Chief Keef's Organization, Globe Navy. Yes, Chief Keef, I'm from Chicago. Chief Keef's Organization has a gaming organization. They'll be educating the students July twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, if there's anyone else from the public that wishes to comment, you can still come forward if you would like. Seeing none, we will then move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda? Moved by Commissioner Support, supported by Vice Chair McLeod. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. We will move on then to our agenda items. The first one from the Health Department. Michigan State Police Burn State Crisis Intervention Program Grant.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the Michigan State Police Agreement. Accept and appropriate two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars to the twenty-twenty-five health fund budget for the SCIP grant, and authorize the board chair or designate to execute the grant agreement. Approve extensions, amendments, and increases to the grant appropriation, not to exceed fifteen percent of the original award. Summary: The Health Department has received a two-year, two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-dollar grant from the Michigan State Police to partner with a community-based organization to implement violence prevention and intervention programs, particularly those focused on gun violence. Realism is loyalty has been chosen as the CBO to implement their each-one-teach-one intensive mentoring program. This mentoring program focuses on addressing specific needs, such as housing insecurity, substance use, and family dynamics that increase the chances of youth-involved gun violence. The program also requires both youth and caregiver participation to effectively reduce social aggression, drug use, delinquency, and arrests. Program participants engage in six to nine hours weekly of direct intensive engagement with trained mentors, weekly group activities, and a minimum of two hours of one-on-one mentoring therapy with a mental health clinician for thirty-six weeks. Program, program outcomes have shown an increase in self-sufficiency and interest in bettering themselves through education, training, and work, greater satisfaction in personal relationships with parents, peers, and school personnel, reduction in risk-taking behaviors, including substance abuse, criminal activity, and disreputable social connections, and increased participation in community-building efforts. Funds will be used to support the contractual agreement with realism is loyalty, existing Health Department staff to provide administrative and financial oversight and reporting, and indirect costs. The grant period is May one, twenty-twenty-five, through March thirty-one, twenty-twenty-seven. Corporate counsel will review and approve the agreement as to form prior to signature.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner Sparks, supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, how was the partner selected? Did we select the partner? Did the State Police select the partner? Did the Health Department select the partner?
Yeah, we selected the partner. So, this was a grant that was only open to entities of government. And so, the requirement was that we partnered with a community-based organization in the communities that had a program to reduce gun violence. And I met Mr. Chapman at a meeting that we were talking about community safety and was really impressed with his program and thought it was a perfect fit for this type of partnership with this burn skip funding. And so, we selected them as, as the partner for this.
Okay. So, I'm not familiar with it, and maybe should be more familiar with it, but can you just talk a bit about, how, how many individuals would you anticipate you'd be dealing with over the course of, I guess, two years?
Yeah, so each year, this program looks to impact seventeen youth, plus their parents. So, it's up to seventeen youth and then up to thirty-four parents who are involved in the parenting workshops over the course of, I believe, ten months. I mean, Mr. and Mrs. Chapman are here as well, but it's looking to impact at least thirty-four youth over that two ye, two years.
And how do we identify, do I have one more? I'm sorry. How do we identify which youth we're going to work with? Are they referred to us? Is it, is it competitive? I mean, just...
That's a great question, and Mr. Chapman is here. I don't know if he's able to come up here and explain more of that. I don't know the specifics of how the youth are referred to the program.
Sure.
You warned him you could put him on the spot.
Well, they're, they're the experts, so.
Good morning. Um, so, one correction is, we work with the entire family. So, those seventeen families, if they have siblings in the home, mom, boyfriend, husband, whatever, we work with the entire family. What we do is blend intensive mentoring with mental health services. What was the other question?
How they're referred.
How they're referred. Do you want to take that?
So, we actually have open referrals. We get referred by the schools, word of mouth from other participants. Our mentors go into the different schools and kind of let the kids know about the program, so it's really open to anybody who needs it.
And, and are you opening and functioning in Kent County somewhere or in a jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay.
We're at Martin Luther King and Union Street, Franklin and Eastern, Martin Luther King area. All our mentors have lived experiences as the demographic that we serve, and all our staff is entrenched in community, so.
So, this is not a new program. You've been functioning for a while.
This is our fifth cohort, actually our biggest group yet. I'm excited. We have eighteen, so eighteen youth. But that includes their parents, and then services are extended, so mental health services. If there's other youth in the house or a parent who needs therapy, then they can engage as well.
And how do you measure success? I mean, it...
So, when the participants come into the program, we have a number of ways, but one of the ways is they're given the Realism is Loyalty in-house assessment, which looks at their substance use, their family dynamics, their personality, and they're given a risk level. It goes from very high to low. And so, at the end of the program, they're given that same assessment, and we kind of score where they've fallen while being in the program for nine months.
And your experience as those scores improve?
Yes. Great deal.
Otherwise, the Health Department wouldn't have selected you.
Yes, a great, great deal.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Is there any other questions? Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Chair. I was really excited when I heard realism is loyalty was going to be part of this program. I don't know them personally, but I have witnessed their work in many organizations through Arbor Circle, through the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, through United Way, through the Urban League. I do know that this is, they do have a brick and mortar as well, and I do know that this is one of the premier organizations that the African-American community and Latino community uses. They've done nothing but great work. They didn't just start yesterday. They've been around for about ten years, I believe, or so. So, I was really excited to support them, excited that the Health Department is going to be working with them, and I'm looking forward to the great results that I keep hearing about throughout our community. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. That takes us to Item B. Thank you. Takes us to Item B, Community Action. Approve the Kent County Community Development Action Plan and Appropriation.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the Kent County Community Development Annual Action Plan, also called the AAP, for July one, twenty-twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty-twenty-six, to accept and appropriate two-million-five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and two cents in revenue to the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs in the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six Community Development Fund, and authorize the board chair or designate to execute the grant documents related to the plan, and approve extensions, amendments, and increases to the grant appropriation, not to exceed fifteen percent of the original award. Summary: Kent County qualifies as an urban county, making it eligible to receive funding from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for its forty-fourth year as an entitlement community. The five-year extended consolidated plan, covering July one, twenty-twenty-one, through June thirty, twenty-twenty-six, includes a needs assessment, market analysis, and corresponding goals and objectives. This plan is a required component for receiving CDBG and home funding from HUD. The Annual Action Plan serves as a grant application and outlines the proposed activities and budget for the use of home and CDBG funds during the period of July one, twenty-twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. This includes CDBG projects submitted by local units of government. The application allocates anticipated federal funding that includes CDBG of one-million-six-seventy-three-three-sixty-five and home of eight-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-two-eighty-nine-and-two cents. It also accounts for an estimated twenty-five thousand dollars in program income from the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program and five thousand dollars in anticipated program income from the Home Investment Partnerships Program. Assistant Corporate Counsel will review and approve the agreements as to content and form.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Vice Chair McLeod. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We're on to Item C, from Community Action. Approve the Kent County Community Action Annual Operations Funding.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to accept and appropriate seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-and-one-dollar to the Kent County Community Action Fund for the City of Grand Rapids Annual Operating Funding and the Department of Energy Weatherization Assistance Program contingent upon execution of an amended grant agreement, and to authorize the board chair or designate to execute the grant agreement, approve extension, amendments, and increases to the grant appropriation, not to exceed fifteen percent of the original award. Summary: In accordance with the Municipal Partnership Agreement dated October one, twenty-seventeen, Kent County Community Action will receive its annual allocation of City of Grand Rapids CGRS funds. This marks, marks the fortieth year of funding, with the partnership having begun in nineteen-eighty-five. The allocation of one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand for CGRS includes funding for administrative and supportive expenses. KCAA has received notification from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services regarding its annual allocation under the US Department of Energy Weatherization Assistance Program for the program year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-five. For the program year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, KCAA will receive $623,001. This represents the fifty-second consecutive year of participation in the WAP, which began in nineteen seventy-three. KCAA expects to complete fifty-three units and dwellings with this funding. The allocation of $623,001 includes funding for admin, supportive, and technical training expenses, as well as funding for labor and materials and health and safety measures installed in consumers' dwellings. The grant period is July one, twenty-five, through June thirty, twenty-six. Assistant Corporate Counsel will review and approve the agreements as to content and form.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Vice Chair McLeod, supported by Commissioner Stack. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. We are on to our final agenda item for the day from the Drain Commissioner's Office, the Dean Lake Special Lake Level Assessment District Bond.
Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve the special assessment role related to Dean Lake and authorize the issuance of Dean Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District Bond Series twenty twenty-five. Summary, the Kent County Drain Commissioner as a delegated authority designated by the Kent County Board of Commissioners under Part 307 of the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act has the ongoing responsibility to maintain the court-ordered lake levels. Kent County Circuit Court, by order dated October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, established the normal lake level of Dean Lake and Grand Rapids Charter and Plainfield Charter Townships, Kent County, to be seven hundred and six point eight feet, subject to reasonable variations, and established the boundaries of the Dean Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District for the purpose of financing lake-level improvements and activities necessary to establish and maintain the lake levels. The Kent County Drain Commissioner held a public hearing as the delegated authority for Kent County on Wednesday, May twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. At the hearing, a computation of costs was prepared for the improvements necessary to maintain the normal level of Dean Lake in the amount of $2,915,588.32, and prepared a special assessment role assessing such amount against parcels of land in the Special Assessment District that benefit from the project. After hearing objections and public input regarding changes to the role, the Drain Commissioner has approved and confirmed the cost of the project and special assessment role. The delegated authority has proposed that the Special Assessment District issue bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed to pay all or part of the costs of the project, and that the county will pledge its full faith and credit to the payment of the bonds. The proposed resolution will authorize the pledge of the county's limited tax full faith and credit as backup security on the bonds. The county treasurer to execute a certificate for the county to comply with the continuing disclosure, the county administrator and chairperson of the Board of Commissioners to prepare and approve portions of the official statement that pertain to the county and the execution of all documents as necessary in order to close on the issuance of the proposed bonds. The bond proceeds will be used to pay for necessary improvements by the Dean Lake Lake Level Special Assessment District in the amount not to exceed $2,915,588.32.
I understand we also have a presentation from the Drain Commissioner on this.
Good morning.
Good morning, committee. I have with me Stacy Hisong. She is the Drain District Attorney that handles the governance of how we operate under the law. She's going to give a brief oversight of the lake-level law that we operate under, so you can understand how we got to where we are, because I'm sure most of you aren't familiar with this process. So, we want you to understand how we got here after I was given the resolution from the board to move forward with this project. So, back, just a brief beginning. Back twenty twenty-one, I was approached by the Lake Association Board to give them relief and get an outlet to the Dean Lake. There is no outlet there currently. They have an augmentation well to fill the lake, but no way to pump the water out. We were going through a very wet period at that time. All our inland lakes were way above normal. So, they needed relief, and I had been down this road with them a couple times. And once the water level went down, the pressure came off, so nothing happened. This time, the pressure didn't come off because of the circumstances. So, I then said, I asked the board, "You'd contact your property owners, and if you can get two-thirds of your lake people to want to do this on an informal account, you show me. And if that's there, I will then have an agreement, a petition, if you will, written up by our attorney that each one would sign before I brought them to you as a board." So, then, that happened. We had eighty-eight signatures. I brought them to you at that time, so you knew these people were serious this time. I wasn't going to waste your time. And you have that. That triggered it. You gave me the resolution, and this is where we are now. All right? When we went to the court, we had, for the court hearing, we had to have a estimate of what the project would cost. So, the engineer put that together based on facts at that time. When the petition was signed, there was no talk about an assessment, what it would be, other than, "We need it fixed." Now, they may have had internal conversations on that. I was not privy to that. I seen some emails recently that kind of looked at that, that they were within their organization talking about costs, but it didn't come from the Drain Office. We didn't do an estimate until we had to prepare for the court hearing. So, with that, I'm going to have Stacy Hisong kind of go through the legal process. The... There we go. She's going to talk about the Part 307, lake levels.
Good morning, and thank you for hearing about lake levels this morning. So, my name is Stacy Hisong. I work at the law firm Fahy Schultz Bersick Roads, and I work with about sixty different counties dealing with drains and lake levels, deal with a lot of lake levels across the state. And so, when we're talking about that, we're talking about Part 307 of the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act. But the Lake Level Act, recodified under the Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, has actually been around for over a hundred years. And I think this board is aware you have several lake levels established in Kent County, and Dean Lake is one of them. Under a prior statute, it was, has established lake level in nineteen sixty-five with amendments in nineteen ninety-five and twenty twenty-two. And so, to understand how a lake level works, as you can imagine, lake, there's differing opinions on lakes. I was just at a court hearing in Holton Lake on Friday, and there's lots of different opinions on that lake. Every lake, if there's a lake that everybody agreed, that's the lake I would love to live on, because I have not seen that. There are different circumstances. And so, I think the legislature chose to deal with lake levels more uniquely than other public improvement projects. And so, there's almost like three prongs to it. The first prong is the County Board of Commissioners, which is the most important, because the County Board of Commissioners is the one that has jurisdiction, is responsible for an established lake level once it goes through this process. Ultimately, you're financially responsible. You're the maintenance and improvement responsible, everything with regard to that. The second prong is the delegated authority that the county board has a right to appoint in this case. And oftentimes, it is the Drain Commissioner to handle the day-to-day responsibilities granted to the County Board of Commissioners in terms of doing inspections, designing projects, coming up with assessment roles. That ultimately is the decision of the county board. And then, uniquely, the Circuit Court gets involved. And the Circuit Court decides two things. Who's in and out of the Special Assessment District? Not how much people pay, but who's in and who's out? And what the lake level should actually be. So, there's this interplay between those three different entities and helping deal with managing and paying for established lake levels across the state of Michigan. So, that's just a little bit of a primer that will allow me to go through the rest of these slides a little bit quicker. And so, to the purpose of the meeting today is two things under the statute and then one for financial purposes. Is one, once we get to the spot where we're ready to do a project and to levy assessments, the board's responsibility is to approve the project cost and approve the assessment role. And also, because it is jurisdiction and you're pledging full faith and credit, also approve the financing of the project. So, those are the three big things that this board is charged with doing today and resolving. And so, that is your decision, not the Drain Commissioner's decision. But of course, the Drain Commissioner, as your delegated authority, brings recommendations to you. So, this is a PowerPoint from the proceedings that took place last week. And so, really, the Kent County Drain Commissioner held a hearing last week. We had a large number of property owners attend that meeting that gave very good testimony, that was very professionally done. The chair of their lake association does a fine job of representing them and communicating on their behalf and advocating on their behalf. So, that meeting took place last week, and the recommendations are before this committee and then ultimately, the county board next week. And so, for purposes of this project, and I am not an engineer, although I am around more engineers than attorneys, I'm going to go very quickly through this part, and then the engineer can answer follow-up questions for you. But basically, the lake level control, all lakes are different. Some have springs, some have a lot of, a huge contributing watershed that allows for water, and then some require an augmentation well to really reach the established lake levels. This lake requires an augmentation well. And then, this lake does not have an established outlet, and a major part of this project is to establish an outlet. So, what I mean by that is, let's say you have a bathtub with no plug. That's what we have in this situation. There's no outlet. There's no way to drain out water in high-level circumstances, and so, this project would provide one. And so, after the project has been developed and bid, and we do have bids with a bid hold on them, we develop a computation of costs that is statutorily required. And under the statute, it includes a number of items, and here are some of the enumerated items that made up the computation of costs for this project. In terms of the assessment methodology, it is a pretty standard methodology that we see with lake levels across the state of Michigan with lake front lots. And what I call that is, that is a direct access. You're the closest lot to the lake or property to the lake. Get a one. And then, backlot owners, who have some sort of legal access, not a public access, but legal access based on their property ownership, pay half of a front lot owner. So, half, so a point five. And so, with lake levels, unlike drains, this is not based on acreage. This is based on access to the lake. And so, that's a normal way of performing a lake-level assessment. And I believe that is the way that all lake levels are assessment methodology for all the lake levels in Kent County. And so, in this situation, it is a sizable assessment, because it is not a huge assessment district. Like I said, Holton Lake, we have four thousand four hundred properties that can be assessed. In this one, we don't have nearly that much. And so, the total assessment is significant to these property owners, but we've worked with our bond counsel and municipal advisor for a twenty-year assessment. It is still a significant annual assessment, but one that we believe is necessary. The average backlot would pay, of course, as we went through this, approximately half of that. And these numbers do not include interest. We don't have an interest amount yet, because bonds have not yet been sold. There was a significant amount of correspondence that was received by property owners. Again, the property owners were very active in communicating their positions, which I think is a good thing. And those were recorded by the Drain Commissioner. And as I mentioned, we also had a significant amount of public comment at that meeting. So, after the county board, in the event that the county board approves a project, the project costs a special assessment role, there is an opportunity for property owners that appeared either in writing or in person at last week's special assessment hearing to appeal. That is, to a court of competent jurisdiction. It is not normally the tax tribunal, like you would see for other special assessments. That is normally to Circuit Court, although the statute does not specify that. And to appeal, as I mentioned, there was a number of property owners who are eligible to appeal if they so choose. And the next steps would be, after this meeting, would be the county board meeting. Then, there would be an appeal, and then financing and construction. And I apologize for my cough. So, with regard to that, we do have a bid holds. We are asking the county board to move in a timely fashion with regard to that. And bless you for the water, because we do have a bid hold, and we are eager to start construction this fall so that we can do the necessary, thank you, Taylor, road work to allow for the work to begin in a timely fashion. And so, with that, I think we have Ken here. We have Roger Swetz here, who is our bond counsel, as well as the engineer to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, before we take any questions, is there a motion for this item? Moved by Vice Chair McLeod. Is there support? Support by Commissioner Oliver King? Okay, now, are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Sparks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have questions. I'm not sure who I need to direct these to. Are we speaking to...
We'll get you the right person.
Okay, thank you so much. You said that you had eighty-eight people at the meeting before, and then you said there was a large number of individuals. How many people would be included in this assessment total?
Okay. So, I'm going to ask Ken and the engineer to help me with the number. And so, I want to make sure when we're talking numbers, what's involved. So, the eighty-eight people, I think, were the property owners who signed a petition to show support for a project. But how many properties are actually in the assessment role?
That was eighty-eight of one hundred and twenty-two at that time.
Yep. So, is a hundred and twenty-two parcels in the district?
It's, there's been a split. So, there's a change right now. I think there's been two splits.
Okay, so one hundred and twenty-four, plus or minus?
So, one hundred and twenty-four people?
Hundred and thirty-four.
Thank you for that. So, assessments are never easy, because people have to pay. You know? I guess, as the county, we know that it needs to be done. The property owners have conceded that it needs to be done as well. We just want to make sure it's equitable, though, you know? And make sure that individuals are willing to do it and that the county has made every effort and attempt to make sure that we have the best price. So, I'm sure you have, but I just wanted to ask for the record. Have we done RFP? How many bids did we get? Are we getting the best price for our residents?
Competitive bids were taken. Yeah. We bet, once the engineering was done. So, Prine Newhoff was a project engineer. And part of this project, it wasn't just the lake level. The Hills and Dales community drains into the Hills and Dales drain. This lake is going to use the Hills and Dales drain to let its outlet, as its outlet. So, we had to make sure that the drain could handle the water that we're going to put into it without doing harm to people downstream. So, we partnered with Plainfield Township, and they had, Prine Newhoff is their attorney, their township attorney. And they were doing a study on the Hills and Dales community, because they're having flooding there. So, they're working through another issue. So, as part of this project, to evaluate the drainage region, flood district, flood plain, they also studied whether it could handle the lake outlet. And then, Plainfield Township paid for that study. So, that's how Prine Newhoff, then, with their background knowledge of the township, then we ushered them in to handle this as well. It was a fit. It was, they have the information. So, it made sense to continue to work with Prine Newhoff. And then, once they'd finished the study and working with the road commission to figure out the best route to take the water, there was a process in that. Then, we had to get permits with Eagle. And by the time all that other work was done, then we were able to get it together as a bid package. And it was put out for bid for construction, and that was bid on a public bid opening.
So, we're sure that this is the best course of action, the path of least resistance. We know that this is the best. The path of least resistance, we know that this is the best cost, the best price. Because ultimately, Kent County is going to pay this, but it's going to be paid back by the people that live there. And we want to make sure that they have every opportunity, I think that the, they're going to pay about a thousand dollars a year-ish for.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so twenty-three years.
Correct.
So that's.
Twenty, twenty years.
Twenty years, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think it's admirable that your, that your, your association is here. And it sounds like you're doing good work together, working with the county, so thank you for that.
Yeah, we, we, we did, you know, you can get three different engineers and come up with a different approach to anything. You know, there is no one set. But this is a very responsible plan, and we did review it after the public meeting. I had Kevin go back, Prine Newhoff go back and look at some options and see what, where we would cut. If we went to just a basic system where we'd have to have someone go and turn the pump on, turn it off, and also make sure we weren't flooding downstream, because if the water's high downstream, we can't kick the pump on, and we had someone monitoring that, we're going to save eighty thousand dollars. By having this thing automated, the politics is not in it. It is calibrated, has technology, it will work when needed. If it needs augmentation, it'll kick on that well. If it's downstream is registering too high water, it won't let the outlet pump kick in. So when everything lines up and it works as we're ordered by court to do, no one's going to be harmed. This system doesn't depend on someone there to trigger all the different parts that have to work. So that's, that's, some would say that's a Cadillac. But if you're overseeing that system and you got a deal and you got six other lake levels with the same issues, that's a pretty necessary technology for today to keep everybody living in peace.
Yeah, when there's a severe storm event, it tends not to be on one piece of infrastructure when you're the Drain Commissioner and it's everything hitting at the same time.
Uh, Vice Chair McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. So this has been helpful, that I think the presentation was helpful to just get an understanding of the law and the things that we have to abide by for the Drain District. So I just have a couple of questions. It sounds like the homeowners' association, as well as those that attended the open meeting, there's about twenty-three comments from those that attended that meeting, and it seems like most of them were in agreement that this needed to be done. But that the cost, there was, there seems to be quite a significant deficit in understanding why the cost has ballooned how it has. So it sounds like the initial cost estimate back in twenty twenty-one or twenty-two was about one point one million, and now we're at two point nine. And I, I heard inflation and those sorts of things. But I, could we get some, a, a little bit more information in terms of where the one point eight million in additional cost came from? Is it the fact that there's some, because I, I heard that the drain that it will be draining into, Hills and Dales drain, did there, was there adjustments that had to be made to that lake, or excuse me, that drain that's increasing the cost? Was it just materials? Like, what, what is the main source of the additional cost? Because that's a huge increase over a short period of time. We noted that inflation is major, but that seems pretty extreme. So could you just give us a little bit more information on that?
Sure, and good morning. My name is Kevin Gritters. I'm a project manager with Prine Newhoff, consulting engineer for the Drain Commissioner. So going back four or five years, when we did the initial work on it, we did some cost estimates based on the information that we had at the time, which always with preliminary estimates, it's early on, we don't have all the information. So we make best estimates based on information available at the time. So we did that and made an assumption that, in particular, for this system, the pipe going from the pump station, which would take the water away from the lake, that the pipe could be built outside of the road pavement. So in the grass area next to the road. So that was one assumption that we made. We didn't know exactly where the station would go along the lake. We had a general idea. So we make some overall assumptions to that. So I'm going to be speaking about the changes and increases due to the construction piece of it. I can't speak to the full change because I think there was more than just construction there with the, the cost increase. But when we got to the point of actually getting into design, working with the road commission, like the Drain Commissioner said, figured out that for a portion of the route, the pipe would have to go under the road, under the road pavement because of all the other utilities that are on, on each side of the road. So in those areas, the pipe now has to go in the road, which means the road has to get replaced. There's potential for other utilities that are impacted. Once the road is opened up and we figure out what's actually there. And then also with the pump station, the controls portion of it was something that we worked on. And while it's complicated with respect to, we need to be able to fill the lake when it's low. We need to be able to drain the lake when it's high and not affect downstream properties. The implementation of that, we tried to keep as simple as possible. So it's a, it's certainly a simple station. It's something that, from the engineering side of things, it's a station that might get used, might run only once every five or ten or twenty years. It all depends on the weather and the lake levels. So we tried to develop a system that would be able to sit there, be ready to operate when it needs to, be reliable when it needs to operate, and not be anything extra more than it needs to be. So we came up with a system that is similar to some of the city of Grand Rapids stormwater pump stations where it's a suction pipe inlet. There's not going to be any pumps sitting down in the water that could be affected if they don't operate for a long time. The intake is relatively simple. The whole station is relatively simple. So while there were some scope changes with the location of the pipe, we figured out the details of the pump station. And I'll, I'll say again, I know there's disagreement about this, but inflation is the major one. We've seen, especially with pump station projects like this for municipal type of stations, fifteen to twenty percent a year inflation, and do that for four or five years, and there's double a, double a project cost. So that's the fact of the matter as we see it. We wanted to keep as simple a station as possible operationally so that it's reliable. Could things change? Yeah, you could change the scope, but there's always going to be a balance then of cut some costs somewhere. You might save on an initial capital, but then end up having to pay for it in the long term with more operation and maintenance costs going forward. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay, thank you. That was helpful to, to get an understanding of that. So it sounds like the initial estimate didn't have kind of, if, you know, if it, we need to go under the road as opposed to on the side of the road, like the things that kind of significantly impacted, like with the scope of the project and what it would. So I think that that, that helps me understand a, a big portion of why the cost is more. I wasn't, I guess, thinking the fifteen per tw- to twenty percent per year for the pump station, you know, operations and kind of building themselves either. It's, it's just unfortunate that I, that those other scenarios weren't accounted for initially in that initial estimate because I think that that's where the, probably the homeowners were kind of stuck in thinking that this would be, you know, this benefit that would be reasonable in cost for them. But since those other things weren't considered initially, that has kind of, you know, shifted the perspective in terms of the overall cost. So, so it sounds like you guys are doing the kind of the, the basic minimum amount of project that's needed for this, this drain. And that, that there's just a cost that has increased because of the time it took to get from initially, this is what we want to do, to now where we're getting ready to do the project cost. So thanks for that explanation. I think, again, the, the presentation was very helpful to understand the legal perspective, so that answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Teal. So the, of the three issues that we have to deal with as a board of commissioners ultimately, the first one is the approval of the role. Is that essentially the engagement of what properties are going to be included in the assessment?
Well, the circuit court decides what properties are included, and so that can't be changed. It's a matter of what the assessment methodology is with regard to who pays what.
So, and the methodology that we'd be approving is the one credit per, per lakefront property, regardless of how many front feet they have?
Yep, correct.
And then a half credit for anyone who's off the lake that has some legal allocated access to the lake.
Yep, I think the Drain Commissioner, as a result of the hearing, made some minor revisions to that based on where the pump station was actually going to be located, since a portion of that property was going to be used for that, a reduction. I think a couple of minor ones with township property, but that's it, yes.
And when you say a hundred and thirty-four properties, is that inclusive of the back and the front properties?
Correct.
Okay. So our role there is, do we approve that allocation between the one credit in the front and the half credit in the back? And I, I don't have a lot of experience in this, but it seems like a methodology that is fairly typical, is used across the state?
It is, and that's the same methodology that's used for each and every one of your other lake levels here in Kent County, so it's very consistent.
So if a, if a.
And our lake board, our lake improvement boards as well.
Okay, okay.
The assessment for lake improvement services are the same.
So you say that a property owner has a right of appeal. Once this is approved, they can appeal to the court.
Yes.
What, what would they be appealing?
They would be appealing their assessment amount.
Okay, so not that they're in the role or the allocation methodology?
They could appeal, so there was already a court hearing that there was an opportunity to appeal in circuit court on what I call who's in and who's out, the boundaries of the special assessment district, and that time has been waived. Like, in terms of, I think somebody else should have been in. I shouldn't be in here at all. In terms of the assessment methodology, they could do that, but really, they're only appealing their own. So they can't say, the methodology doesn't work, we should think you should change it on everybody. It would be the amount of the assessment for their specific property.
Am I right that when we are approving at a special assessment that is assessed on a property owner, the, the amount of the assessment should in theory be equal to or less than the enhanced value to their property from the project?
Not only from the project, but from the lake level itself.
Right.
Yep.
So in essence, if it is twenty-three thousand dollars, then in theory, that property has been enhanced by that amount or more.
There should be a relationship with regard to that. And so I, I am not an expert in, in lake level appeals. I have another partner that does that, but there should be some relationship to the, a property's value and having a lake level itself, an augmentation well, a way to deal with severe storm events, et cetera, yes.
So is that appealable as well, then, the, the question of, look, I don't think my property is enhanced one dime by this project?
Yes, that could be the subject of the appeal. We, there was a recent, I don't know that they get into the specifics of dollar amount versus dollar amount, but there was a recent Court of Appeals opinion out of the Midland Dam Break, the Four Lakes situation, where those were, those types of questions were asked. That if you want to learn more about that, it's a beautiful opinion. I was not the attorney on it. It was so beautiful.
I'll put it on the list.
If you want to go to bed at night, I recommend it highly.
So, okay, I think I understand it. Then, then gets to the cost of this, and I understand we've looked at it. I, I get the road construction. In other words, we have to, we have to rebuild the road if we're going to put this thing under the road. And roads aren't cheap, so I understand that. The, the cost is, is driven by what's the design. And the design that we're implementing here, I've, I've heard this term Cadillac versus Chevy. I don't have to be the one, so I don't know what that means. But it, is it basically, i- is this a design that is fairly standard across the state? And it is the design that will give us, these folks, a system that will basically work in perpetuity?
Well, if someone could come up with a system that could work in perpetuity, that'd be very wealthy.
Roughly.
Yes, it's, it's, it's very standard for munif- municipal infrastructure. In regard, with respect to reliability, the, this simplicity of it comes, and the differences from other standard systems is this is a single pump system. For stormwater, you don't always need to pump. It's different from wastewater, where if a pump fails, a basement's going to back up with wastewater. So this can be simpler, so we designed it as a single pump system, which saves significantly on the project cost. Like I said before, we, we designed it with simplicity in mind, but yet to be a reliable system so that it's there when needed. Did that answer?
I, I think the question in terms of the Chevy, oh, you stay with me. Of the Chevy and the Cadillac is more about the technology to have it automated versus not automated, I don't think.
Sure.
And then maybe whether do you have a bathtub that has a, an outlet to it, or you don't? I, I think those are the two big things.
Okay, so with respect to the controls for the system, and that question has come up. The controls, which the Drain Commissioner said were estimated at about eighty thousand dollars, that's to automatically monitor the lake level so that this can all be done without a person having to go out there. So it watches the lake level. If in an extended dry period, the lake level is low, if it reaches a certain point, it will automatically turn on the augmentation pump and fill that level back up to the established legal lake level. And then if it's an extended wet period and the lake level is high, it automatically turns on the pumps. But before it turns on the pumps, it checks the downstream system to make sure we're not going to harm anyone downstream. And then it would turn it on and pump the lake level down. So that's, that's the level of automation that we're talking about.
Right, so the alternative is we have an individual who's responsible for making sure that I need to get out there and turn something on, or I don't?
Correct, and that's where it can be, I think I mentioned before, it can be an upfront capital cost or it can be an ongoing operation and maintenance cost where there might be a call about the lake level's low, the pump should be turning on. Well, go out there and it's only two inches lower than it was supposed to be, but not down to the level to kick on yet. So there could be frequent calls and having to go out to the site to check and then decide if it needs to pump water in or pump water out. And that can be time-consuming and costly, having to manually do that.
So the other factor I wanted to have you talk a little bit about is, is what's your anticipated design use? So if this was a system that, from an engineering perspective, you have some sense about, I get it, we don't know weather. I mean, weather comes up and down, but you know, there's this idea of a hundred-year flood that says, you can anticipate you're going to have a flood within a hundred years, that is this level. Is this a system that you would anticipate would be triggered once a year, once, once every five years, multiple times a year? What, what's the twenty-three thousand bind with respect to just your design perspective as to how frequently it'll, it'll be stepping up and doing the job?
If I would answer this four years ago.
You'd have to be a lawyer that Ken said you were.
It's pumping, it's pumping continuously for.
Continuously.
For even, even multiple years.
High groundwater, high precipitation year, it's going all the time.
Yeah, so part of the study was, part of the initial study was looking at what's the right flow rate to pump out. So there's a lot of factors that with groundwater and precipitation, and we make a lot of assumptions about that. The pump station at the size that it is right now, considering all those assumptions, to take it from the high level back to the legal lake level would take two or three or four months to get the water level down. So that would be, that's in a relatively normal period. If there's a dry period, which I think the augmentation well right now pumps much more frequently due to evaporation and just water loss out the bottom of the lake. So all that to say, four years ago, it would have, it would probably pump continuously for many, many months, if not years, in that extended wet period. Right now, the level, as I understand it, has been relatively down and might not pump. So it could, it could be five. So, it could be five years or 10 years if it's an extended dry period where it doesn't, where this pump station to pump water out doesn't pump at all.
And one of the problems with this lake is it doesn't have a natural moderating system built into it, yeah. So, as the engineer, if this was your house in this lake, is this the best system?
From a, for a reliable station and a simple station, that's what our goal was. And that's generally how we look at things. If it's our property that we're trying to protect, is this what we would do? And the answer I would say is yes.
It's not the Cadillac, it's not the Chevy, but it's what you would use?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to my neighbors who are here. I live only about a mile from Dean Lake, less than that. So, I appreciate you guys coming here this morning. I had a couple of questions. I was at the, Stacy, I appreciate you giving a bridge version of the presentation that we got a couple of weeks ago. One of my, I think my questions initially are not really for legal or for engineer, but Mr. Walters had asked that we consider a delay to get some further information, and that was expressed to us as members of the committee as well. So, I was talking with Chair Teal, who had the idea that maybe we could delay. And so, we considered that. The finance committee only meets on a monthly basis, so we meet once a month. So, our next meeting isn't until about 30 days from now. Actually, we just restructured our committee rules. And we said, two years ago, and some of the drain issues now, our drain commissioner falls under the Community Health and Safety Committee. So, we considered a couple of different options, saying, can we delay this a month to the next finance meeting? And the response was, we can't really do that because we are going to have to go into another year, into the next season for construction if we do that. And then the secondary question, which was less desirable, because this committee has worked on drain issues in the past, and we're a little bit familiar with some of this stuff, was can we delay it to two weeks? Still make the last board meeting in June and have this come to the finance, or I'm sorry, the Community Health and Safety Committee in the last month of the week, or the last week of the month, rather, sorry. But the answer was no, and I'm just trying to understand. I was frustrated to hear that because we, I just don't know how we got to the point where we were up against this time limit, where if we don't make a decision today and the board doesn't make a decision next week, we're then pushing everything back for another year. And of course, then, I can't think of the word, but emphasizing or enhancing the impact of inflation on delaying yet another year. I just want to kind of better understand how we-
Sure.
How it took the time.
And so, I would ask you to send your frustrations towards the legislature, but there's a reason to do that. So, drains and lakes have these very unique timeframes, like a 15 day appeal period, and you don't even go to the tax tribunal in drains, it's a 10 day appeal period. And then the hearing for that is 10 to 15 days later, and you don't go to the tax tribunal. It's because these are projects where there's potential flooding involved, et cetera. And so, the legislature has set very quick, very accelerated timeframes for us to move. And so, in this situation, we had bids that were taken in order to have the public hearing that we had last week, and those have a 90 day bid hold. And so, we have to get, and because the statute provides for some of this, from when we took the bids to the point where we can give a notice of award to proceed in 90 days. So, we have to take the bids, develop a computation of cost, send out notices, three publications in the newspaper, hold the assessment hearing, come to this committee meeting, go to the next meeting, take prepayments, have a bond sale, have a closing on the bond sale, all within that 90 day period to get to where we can award the bid, so we hold the bids. And I think these contractors left some significant money on the table in doing that. The next bid was not the same. And so, the statute is set up to move in that accelerated fashion. That requires a lot of immediate work from everybody sitting here today to make that happen very quickly. But that, again, that is the statutory requirement.
I have-
Yeah, go ahead.
Please, Mr. Swett, yeah?
Yeah, Roger Swett from Dickinson, right, your bond counsel. Not totally my area, but just for a little more color. What we've seen in the last three years is these bid holds becoming very critical. In the past, you might have had longer bid holds, but now they're very critical because the suppliers have very tight timeframes to get to order and fix prices for their supplies. And so, if you use longer bid holds, they really jack up the price to protect themselves because of all the inflation and fluctuation in the market. So, what we've seen is where there's longer bid holds, you get higher prices, and if you blow your bid hold, you know, everything's off the table.
So, a pipe, when you're bidding, you're bidding for the pipe too. And so, let's say you call Northern Concrete Pipe or something like that. They're going to give you the price, but that price is only good for a little bit. If you don't meet that, if there's a delay, then their prices go up. And so, our experience, Roger and I work on lots of projects together, and so we know much more about that than you would think. A bond counsel and a general counsel would with regard to that because the cost increases are extremely significant. I just had a project that we worked on together in Inter County, and the pipe prices went up 14% a year. We were looking at three different phases of a project, and the pipe went up X percent per year in the contractor's costs. And so, these are things that we're considering when putting all this together. That's a rather complicated answer to your question, but it is very complicated, both from a statutory perspective and then dealing with the availability of supplies and the cost increases, especially with tariffs and everything else that's going on. It changes for us on almost a daily basis.
Yeah, I appreciate the explanation from both of you, and I understand it. There is virtually no issue that comes to this board that we can't take a two week delay on. And the fact that we are saying now that we have to make a decision in this meeting or the next, or face further cost increases. I understand we're bound by statute, but I also understand that we're bound, and the bid holds, I'm sensitive to that, certainly, and the cost will go up, but we're also bound by the winter in Michigan. And my understanding is that part of what's driving this that would advance it to another year is we just can't do a lot of this work when, I think Kevin, Mr. Gritters, you said this to some of me, some of this to me before, that we just, we can do some work while it's frozen, but there's others that we can't.
Correct, and just to add some color to that, the contract is set up so that the final completion, there's a milestone for this fall, and then there's final completion for next spring and summer. And the wrinkle that is driving the work for this fall is that the road commission has delayed road improvement work in this neighborhood where the pipeline is going to go multiple times, knowing that this project is going to come. So, they were holding off, didn't want to have the roads improved, and then come back in a year or two later and have this pipe project. So, that road work really has to happen. And so, this last section of roads that, or this last grouping of roads that need to be improved in the neighborhood is where this pipe has to go. And that's where this contract was set up so that the contractor has to get the pipe in and get these roads built this fall and not delay until next year.
That makes sense, if I, I just have a couple more follow-ups. So, that's, I've just been really frustrated with that this is a decision of the Board of Commissioners, but our options, not only by statute, but by the timing here, have really been limited in terms of what we can do. I know I can yell into the void at the legislature, but I know that there are also things that we can do to try to get ahead of things. And I just, I'm frustrated by the fact that we, as I said earlier, there's almost no circumstance where we can't, even trying to send to another committee just to get a little more time for more consideration, that we can't make that happen. But related to that, I don't know who this is a question for, but I know that they, the one thing I haven't had a good answer to, or explicit answer to, is understanding the delay in the timing between when the board moved to make this happen in 2022, and then today when we're doing the final assessment and all of that. I've heard that concern from a lot of residents, and I think rightfully so, considering that inflation is a big driver of the cost increases. So, what was the reason for the two plus year delay to get from point A to B?
So, if you recall, this also required activity in Kent County Circuit Court that took some time to go through, and then there was Eagle permitting concerns. So, we have to obtain an Eagle permit. I don't know who on this board has tried to do that, but that is not a quick process either. And then I would ask the drain commissioner to speak to any other things that take time in moving forward on a project.
Well, as Kevin mentioned, to do a study on what is that lake level have to be set at, all right? We had a lake level, they wanted to raise it, so how far can we raise it? That takes time. They got to understand that lake, what it's doing, how high can it go? How is it going to affect the property owners on that lake? And then, and then the stipulation, well, we can go this high, not as high as they were asking, but then we have to have a pump there because if it goes any higher, there's going to be property damage. Homes will be damaged. And you heard from a couple of the property owners that would be greatly affected. So, and that's why the court order was written as well. You can't raise it until that pump is in there to bring it down. So, that takes time. So, we had to study the lake and then, and then the district, how much water can we put out there? And some of those are assumptions, but all that takes time. It's not just a snap and we got all the answers. And getting a lake level or getting a lake discharge with Eagle is probably one of the hardest permits to get. And Stacy's been running into situations now across the state where Eagle just won't permit that anymore. You got a lake without an outlet, you live with it. Because there's consequences, there's always people affected from the lake, taking the water, putting it somewhere else where it naturally doesn't flow.
I appreciate you mentioning that, Commissioner Yonker, because that was one thing I just had a note to mention that Stacy did not cover in the bridge version today, but did cover at the public hearing is, the other frustrating piece here is that if, there's a really good chance that if we don't do this for Dean Lake at this moment, that we're not going to be able to do it in the future because Eagle is not really interested in doing these. They're becoming less interested is the way that Stacy kind of communicated it.
Yes, that's very true, because I think there's a concern from taking the aquatic life and the plant life or invasive species from a lake and moving it to an outlet and putting that in a different water body. And so, recent projects that I've been involved in, my crystal ball won't say what Eagle will allow in the future, but my experience has been, I was surprised-
That's right.
-when the permit was provided for this. And so, my experience is that it's less likely as time moves forward. And so, again, these are cyclical, like the engineer mentioned. When we get into a high groundwater, high precipitation year again, and this comes, if this came back again, even if there was, we know how much it's going to cost, we still want to do it. And of course, it would be higher than even today, that might not be possible. And then the other thing I did not mention, if you're like, "This is too much, I don't want to do it", that doesn't mean that there's no assessment. There's still been a significant amount of cost to get us to this point. And the circuit court approved a lake level at a higher level that without that plug in the bathtub, so to speak, should be allowed for liability purposes for the county. And so, we would have to go back to court, and if the court would allow us to even change the lake level back, those would also be proceedings and costs that would have to take place to stop this project.
On a lighter note, I want to say I appreciated the bathtub analogy until we got to the four months draining. It kind of, the analogy falls apart. If my bathtub took that long to pump out, that would be an issue. I appreciate the latitude, Madam Chair. I'm just going to wrap up and say, you know, I've been trying to do what we think is the best thing for the county, all the county residents, the lake, and then my constituents that live on the lake. It's just a challenge given all the different factors that are pulling on it. And I think it's just important to share with my colleagues on this committee that there isn't consensus among the people that live on the lake in terms of what they'd like to see. I think more people than not probably want to see something happen to get a level fixed, as the association has mentioned. But then there's people that want that to happen but don't like the cost. Almost nobody likes the cost, which I'm sensitive to. And then there's folks that really don't want anything to happen at all. They're fine, they don't see any benefit from their assessment of it to their own property. So, it just, it puts us in a tough spot. The decision before us today is to consider moving this toward, to the Board of Commissioners for the next round of, you know, final consideration. I'm going to support that today because, primarily because we, I don't think we can move this back another year. And if there's opportunity for us to have further conversations about how we can fix that in the interim, not fix it, but just, you know, if there's further information we can share between the Drain Commissioner's office as the, I forget what it was, designated- Authority, thank you. And the engineers and the residents and the Board of Commissioners, I welcome that. So, again, thanks for letting me take a little time there.
And Madam Chair, if I could add, if you want to remove that responsibility from the Drain Office, I would highly support it.
I think Commissioner McCleod had a second.
Thank you, I just had a quick question. So, there's been some questions about the bond costs and residents' abilities to be able to pay upfront and kind of reduce those amounts, could you speak to that?
Sure, so the computation of cost will not change because we have to bond, whether it's a million dollars or $2 million or $3 million, that's still going to be something that, the cost might change slightly, but there's still costs that are required to go through that municipal finance process as there are for all lake level projects and all drains. When we're talking about prepayments, let's say it's the $23,000, that's before interest. And so, we're dealing with a higher interest amount. And so, I think that's part of the reason, Commissioner Green, we're also asking for expedited action because we want to give property owners as much time as possible before the sale, before bond sale happens to give property owners the opportunity to prepay to avoid those interest costs. So, you wouldn't reduce necessarily the computational cost or that $23,000 what number, but you would not have to pay the, you know, the additional interest. And we don't know what that is until there's the bond sale.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair Teal. So, I agree with Commissioner Green, nobody likes the cost of these things. But, you know, it strikes me that doing nothing is not a responsible option for us at this point. It's going to cost something. What I'm hearing is you've looked at this from a cost effective perspective. And so, the idea, I kind of like, let's put it back 30 days, go back and redo your homework. But I'm hearing that we're going to get the same kind of response 30 days from now if we push it back. It's going to look something like this, it's going to cost something like this, and it may cost more. So, pushing it back doesn't seem responsible at this point. I think the only responsible thing for us to do, given what we're being told, is to get this moving along, get it to the board, and let's decide it.
Okay, is there any additional comments or questions on this item? I did have a quick item, I echo some of what my colleagues have said. I did hear from some of the homeowners that there was some confusion over the costs and the actual breakdown. Is there a way that we could provide that to the residents, the detailed breakdown before the Board of Commissioners meeting, just so that there's clarity for them?
So, in terms, so, yes, I think there's always an opportunity in terms of the invoices, et cetera. We can certainly provide that information. If there's a way, Commissioner Teal, that you'd like to do that so we're not responding to 134 different property owners and rather provide some consolidated response to provide that information, that would be helpful. Maybe perhaps we can work with the association president and do that.
I was going to suggest perhaps the association president. Or if there's a way for people to, that are interested in that information to reach out and say, "I would like it", and they could provide it so that you don't have to reach out to all 134, just so that we have an open dialogue with those residents that are interested in that detailed information.
I think that's great, and not to volunteer, Brian, but if we want to set up a time to go through and do that, we can definitely pull all the invoice and answer questions. That's much easier and cost effective than doing it with individuals.
And some of that has already happened. For example, the bid tabulation for the weeding bid on the construction was provided kind of informally by the issue office. So, there has been some of that that's happened already. Of course, we'd love to have more of that. So, especially if this is going to be decided here, perhaps it's next week's.
So, we can arrange a time with him to go through that and allow you to convey that information. Obviously, anyone who files a Freedom of Information Act request gets that information, but it wouldn't be in- gets that information, but it wouldn't be in the timely fashion to meet the June 12th, so we'd be happy to do that. I volunteered, you can. I hope that was okay.
Great. Well, I just want to make sure we're, we're having an open dialogue and a transparent, transparent dialogue with the, the lake owners there, so that they can have the information that they need, especially if this is going to be a fast timeline, decisions being made next week. So I guess that's our way of getting additional time at this point. So if there's no additional questions or comments from any of my, sure, Commissioner Green.
Just to go off of your note there, Chair, I, i- if we could look at a way that, I, I think it's a fair concern from the residents that we have a, what's, was shared in your presentation, Stacy, that, that we have in our packet, kind of the breakdown of the cost, is pretty high level. And understanding, like, just breaking that down a little bit further, I mean, we have, I don't know, 2 million of this is construction estimate, you know, just kind of a breakdown on maybe.
Yeah.
That next level of detail and what that looks like, and then maybe some way of comparing where we started, which I understand was kind of back of the napkin, and like for the court and not complete, but maybe comparing that to how, where we arrived would be a helpful way, just kind of show where that progressed. So I, thank you, I appreciate your suggestion, Chair.
All right. Thank you for your studied questions and very thoughtful questions.
Thank you. Okay. No additional questions or comments from the committee? Okay, then this is to move us forward to the board meeting next week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. That takes us on to miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great day.